Our 6.6, 915 item. A, consideration of resolution, amending resolutions 2022-15 and 2022-45 for the purpose of extending the end date for changes made to cannabis cultivation taxes in regards to suspension of CPI increases using canopy area only and a decrease of the tax by 50%. And B, discussion on permanent changes to cannabis cultivation taxes. Supervisors Sabatier and Green.
Trying to...
So we want to tackle A first?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, in 2022, starting in January, we started looking at some potential tax reliefs. Eventually, we looked at the CPI increase suspension, especially in light of all the inflation. Looking at a 13% or 12% increase was not necessarily going to be helpful, especially in light of the market decreasing, devaluing. We also looked at a 50% tax reduction, and we also look at changing it from cultivation area, which included buildings, empty space, to just the canopy area only, which is very much aligned with what the state licensing would come with. And so I have just here some quick notes. The CPI increase suspension expires at the end of this year, or January 1st, 2024. The 50% tax reduction expired at the end of 2022, and the canopy area only that expires at the end of this year. Since one of those things was expired and everything else seemed to have different expiration dates, working with Supervisor Green, we're looking at extending those cannabis tax reliefs to the end of 2024. One of the reasons that we chose the end of 2024 is there was a conversation when we did the tax relief about, do we need to put this back to the voters? Do we not need to put this back to the voters? Do we make this permanent or not? And 2024 in November would probably be the most appropriate, and let's just be real cheapest way to put any ballot on the, any measure on the ballot. And so that is why we're looking at that kind of extension and that level of expiration date. No changes to what's already been done, just extending the dates. I know in speaking with our tax collector, Patrick Sullivan, who was very heavily involved in all of these changes in the past, there was a recent review of all of the counties. And we're not the lowest, but we're definitely not the highest as far as the current taxes that other counties are doing. I think we are more towards the lower end, but I do know that nonstop articles that I've been seeing that farms are disappearing, that were cannabis farms, and that the industry is still in the midst of a roller coaster ride and struggle. So looking to see if that's something that the rest of the board would like to consider is to extend those dates, and I'll let Supervisor Green speak on this item as well.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier, and appreciate your work on this. Follow the bouncing ball, a couple ideas in here, and one is canopy versus cultivation area. When we did the first ordinance way back when in 2016, cultivation area seemed like the simpler metric to apply. Of course, it wasn't. We're only taxing the cannabis cultivation, not all the accessory uses and stuff like that. So state law has definitely changed since 2016 to favor the canopy calculation. We did that, this board did it, in the previous resolutions, and the proposal before you now would extend the canopy area calculation. And in the B item on this, we're going to discuss whether that's going to be something we should look at doing permanently. I'm strongly in support of that. The tax relief, yes. You may have heard that cannabis, the licensed cannabis industry has been, not besieged, but has undergone a fairly dramatic up and down cycle in prices. Part of that is simple supply and demand. Part of that has to do with hard costs that are a little harder to track. But the universal thing we've heard from our fledgling cannabis industry is they're hurting. Tax relief will continue to support them as they find their way in this new marketplace. I don't think they have any expectation, or do I have any expectation, the tax relief portion of it would be permanent, because we are among the lowest tax rates in the state still. But we do need to support those people that have committed to moving us forward, have incurred substantial financial risk in doing so, and are just looking to get through the next year or two until the market stabilizes a little bit more. And I think those are good things to do. We have to support our industry. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
I have a question. I thought you were asking for it to become permanent.
No, today...
Was that in the memo?
The resolution that we have before us is to extend all of these to the end of 2024.
Okay.
And then part B is to, do we want to change anything permanently? Is that through a tax measure?
So that'll be in B?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Anything else from the board? Or, okay, we'll open it up to the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this item? Noah, yes? Okay.
Jennifer Smith, representing the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, as well as my own farm. We appreciate that this is back before you and appreciate the relief that we have received the last two years. It's been instrumental in keeping the farms that we do have here afloat. I think that we could directly attribute our success and our ability to continue farming to this reduction in not only the tax rate, but the canopy calculation has been essential. As the market has not drastically improved, we ask that this rate, the reduction does continue. We're appreciative of it. If you look at the state numbers, we're down about 30% in licensed farmers in California. And so we'd like to stop the bleeding here in Lake and maintain what we have. So I appreciate the consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we can go to the Zoom room.
We have phone 6205.
Yes, you can unmute, Bart, if that's you?
Good morning. Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I am wondering what analysis has been done in Lake County to assess the cost of running the commercial cannabis program and the cost to first responders and the sheriff's department for crime, injury, fires? I believe none. This needs to be done before giving a handout of public funds to support a private sector group of businesses. Fiscal analysis needs to be done first, then inform the public of it, and then let the public vote on how they want county monies distributed. Currently, Mendocino, in their cannabis program, costs their general fund $724,000. That's a handout to private business. There isn't enough tax and revenue from cannabis in Mendocino to support their county staff, their first responders, their sheriff's department, needed to support the industry and protect it. Even legal growers want crackdowns on illegal supply that suppresses their profits, sorry. Under Sheriff Martin, 90% of the illegal pot in Lake County, we were told, went unaddressed. California Constitution says that the Board of Supervisors must first focus on public health and safety. Both fire responders and law enforcement are understaffed by 20% or more and already stretched to their absolute limit. Repeated known squatters start fires in the same illegally occupied places. All the county needs the $1 million support per year that the Roadmap Task Force gave to the North Shore. In just a small area of the North Shore that has made quite a difference, the whole county deserves that attention. That is where public funds should be focused. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have another hand up?
Yes, we have Erin McCarrick.
Go ahead, Erin. You can unmute and state your name and have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Erin McCarrick from Clear Lake. I want to thank the board for Supervisors Sabatier and Green for bringing this to the board, especially at this time in the year, arms and operators are determining whether or not to operate. Of course, we always love to be there in person, and usually the cannabis industry comes out in force, and we all are on force via social media and, you know, behind the scenes. But right now, people are very much determining whether or not to continue going. And this is going to help them budget. This is going to help them determine if they can keep going, and also just give a lot of clarity. So I very much appreciate this being brought forth, and I echo what Jen said is absolutely the success and continuation of especially small farms in Lake County is due to this tax reduction and it not being permanent, so we can figure out, you know, what does work with the overall industry in California and nationwide, how that impacts everybody. And in terms of the economic impact, it's much greater than just the cost to the county. There's the ripple effect of people staying here, living here, wanting to continue to live here and provide that, you know, ancillary effect to the community. There's somebody in Sonoma State, I believe Sonoma State and Humboldt, doing a study on the economic impacts of the industry and its ripple effects throughout there. And additionally, having a cannabis program and having viable legal farms enables the county and cities, municipalities, sheriff's office, fire departments to be eligible for grants, either equity grants or law enforcement grants that cut down on the illegal grows and empower small operators to continue. So thank you so much. I urge the adoption of this, and thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Erin.
Sarah Bodnar.
Go ahead and unmute and have three minutes.
Hi there. Thank you. Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Thank you to Supervisors Sabatier and Green for your leadership and being proactive about this at the beginning of this season. Timing is everything, and you know the position farmers are in making decisions about their businesses this year. I also want to say thanks to the Tax Assessor's Office, because in Lake County, permitted farms are taxpaying farms, and that is not the reality in the example that we heard about Mendocino County just a few minutes ago. It's real that some jurisdictions have struggled to collect their taxes, and your program in Lake County functions well, and it means that the legal compliant farms and permitted farms in Lake County are feeding into the tax base, and you can't operate without paying your taxes. And so this is really about sustaining the tax revenue for the county at a rate that can work for the farmers and mean that they will continue to pay their taxes and also remain in the permitted system, which is no small feat in California's market today. So I want to say thanks to the whole county for making that work, and, you know, I think you understand the impact in terms of the farms and their businesses quite well. So I just want to say thanks, and we really appreciate this coming forward now.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else?
We have a repeat of phone 6205.
I think we'll just move on.
And now phone 0438 just popped up.
Okay. Phone 0438, you can unmute and state your name. You'll have three minutes.
And I do not see them unmuting. I know you are on a phone. If you want to press star six, that should unmute. There we go.
Hello, my name is Linda Bryant. I am a small cannabis business owner for Mitty in January of 2022, and I would simply like to echo all of my fellow cannabis business owners in Lake County for what they presented today. I am one of the 70% holding on by my fingernails, trying to decide whether or not I will be able to continue in business, but want so much to be a participant in producing tax revenue for the county in later years, once the business, once the environment, the industry catches back up in the cycle that we are in now. And so thank you so much for your consideration and all the work you do, and I am hoping so much that you will vote positively for the relief in order for us to survive. Thank you so much.
Okay, you can repeat. Bart, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much.
Bart, please, please keep on the, Bart, please keep on the item, which is what we're talking about, which is...
Just on the item. $4 million in back taxes are owed in Mendocino. We don't know what that amount is in Lake County. The crash of the cannabis industry is statewide. It's not local to our county. It's not our fault. It's not the growers' fault. It's happening statewide and has to be addressed systemically statewide. Other states are doing better. Other countries are doing better. How do they do it? We need to find out. The industry locally in Lake County already has access to $40,000 to $150,000 to pay their permit fees, something that no other business has access to. They can already apply for these grants, and there are other grants that have been used already to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board. I don't know who had their pen up first.
I think Michael did.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out there was an e-comment as well, a letter of support for today's action from Michael Columbano, who operates a licensed farm in Jerusalem Gray called Ghost Dance.
There was also an e-comment against it, too. So we want to bring attention to both of them.
That was more of a personal email sent to us rather than as an e-comment, but similar.
True. Thank you for mentioning that as well. To the last, to anyone who might have the idea that we are giving away public funds for the benefit of our cannabis growers, I'd like to revisit the history of this. We're offering tax relief. Cannabis growers in this county do something no other grower of no other crop does. They are taxed on their production, and they are doing that through Measure C, which our voters approved in 2016, and here in Lake County, on the same ballot, that Proposition 64 was approved. And the whole premise of Proposition 64 was to end the drug war, to create pathways to legal compliance for cannabis growers and for those jurisdictions that are brave enough to plow that early path, to create a system of taxation that would help support those local governments and maybe offset some of the unanticipated costs that came with regulation. This is not the only piece of the puzzle. Our permits are still too few and far between. Our process is difficult and expensive to get through. And when we successfully get more growers in the pipeline and when the economy stabilizes, you know, we'll talk about our number of permits and our tax rate in that context, and we'll debate probably from here until the cows come home, what a reasonable level of taxation is. But let us be very clear, nobody's giving away anything here. We aren't getting enough money right now to handle all the compliance work that we need to do with our cannabis farms, because we can't do it all with fees and fines. So we are relying on some of our local cannabis tax monies to do some enforcement. Some of the state cannabis taxes that have been collected since the passage of Proposition 64 is flowing back to the counties in the form of law enforcement grants, health grants, and what have you. So it has been a bumpy road, but I just want to reassure the public that we are well on the path that we staked, you know, starting back in 2016. And we're just looking for ways today to support our growers in this period of transition as we try to invent this, as we're flying this plane, which is a terrible way to do things, but that's the way it works in real life sometime. So I just wanted to highlight that. No giveaways today. The only thing we're giving is time to our growers to mature their operations and to stabilize our markets so we can look ahead to what's coming next.
Supervisor Green, or sorry Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. Just to add on to the comments, so I don't repeat, to me, there's a huge separation between those that have come to the counter, have signed an application, and have received their permit and are doing a legitimate activity that we have approved of versus those that don't. Those that don't come to the counter and are doing an illegitimate activity, absolutely that's taking money away from our fire districts, from our law enforcement, from our code enforcement, and many others. But at the same time, I don't feel comfortable creating a hardship where we lose our legal industry in order to try to counter that in making money to fight the illegal industry. That'd be similar to creating a mechanic tax, because I don't like the amount of home mechanics that are doing car repairs illegally. That doesn't make any sense. We have to figure out how to get people into a legitimate business and out of the illegal businesses that they do. So I think this is an appropriate thing to do. I don't know, I see that Mr. Sullivan is in the back, and I know he didn't want me to call on him, but just in case he wanted to add to the conversation, I believe that we actually do a really good job of collecting our taxes every year. I know that it does take multiple conversations. I think the canopy area has helped the process to really better understand what exactly people are paying for. I know both the cultivator as well as the tax collector seem to both appreciate the canopy change that we did compared to the cultivation area. But we've had some good revenues in comparison to what we anticipated would get paid, but I'm sure Mr. Sullivan would have more details, since you're here.
All right. I was going to speak on B. My comments are more pertinent to B, but I can kind of run this a little bit. Patrick Sullivan, Treasury...
Put it up.
Okay. Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. There's a few comments I wanted to make about the cannabis cultivation tax program that I think are pertinent to the conversation, and this may apply to both A and B. I think the canopy area has been successful. I know your board's considering looking at that on a temporary basis. I hope that's something that could be considered permanent, that puts us more in alignment with the state. Right now, there's not a, I don't think there's a level of coordination and cooperation between state and local on tax that we ultimately want to get to. But if we are going to get there, if we could be on the same system of measurement, that's really going to help. If we go back to cultivation area, it just makes it really difficult when you look at state licensing, if we're just using two different units of measure. So I understand there's the equity concerns locally with the cultivators. I think they've expressed pretty clearly about canopy. But I'd also say from a taxation perspective, if we're trying to implement a program, that canopy area is really important for us if we're going to have a good path forward. One thing I would also bring up as we consider other options are, you know, I know there's other programs out there that have been raised. Other counties use a gross receipts model. I think one of the reasons we have been successful here is because we're using a square footage model. Gross receipts, there are benefits, and I understand why people want it, but the burden on staff to implement that is very high.
I'll come back for B.
Oh, okay. All right.
I have a question though before. One of the due dates is coming up soon, and this is the first year that we've made the adjustments to the due dates and the tax rate. And it's hard to understand, because we haven't completed this year yet, what impacts we have. So is that due date that's coming up soon, is that affecting us negatively, or is it too soon to know? Or is this something that we can reflect on, maybe in the summertime, to see how it has all kind of shaken out?
I think it would be better to look at it in summer. What I can say is, you know, each year of the program, we have actually made other changes to the due dates. We've always shifted dates around. I understand this has been beneficial for local cultivators, because now the collections are happening after the season. So you're being taxed in 2023. These payments are for the cultivation that was performed in 2022. But typically, especially because of the way our ordinance is structured, our penalty framework is based off being, you know, whether it's a day late or a month late, the penalty's the same. So we often have people miss the first installment, but then get caught up at the second. So the due date's not till the end of May, I mean, May 1st, but you can pay without penalty through May 30th. So I don't really expect to have a good handle on where we're at until then. I can tell your board, just if it's helpful, we've collected about 1.2 million this year. There are additional funds now that will be credited as a result of the decision your board made with the equity program, because that did open up a higher level of funding to cultivators that meet the criteria. So there will be additional money credited there. We have a slow trickle of people come in and pay, people that missed the first installment. So I would expect that to continue for the next month or two. So I think budget is probably the first time we're going to have a better feel for where we're at and how this has impacted us. The only other thing I can say with the due dates is, from the Tax Collector's Office perspective, the fewer changes we can make in the future, the better. You know, every time, we run a lot of different programs, so when we do have to remodel and revise the due dates, we have to work that into our other programs and try to balance those workloads. So it seems like we've had good feedback about these due dates. So from my perspective, I hope those could remain going forward.
Okay. Do you want to sit up here for the next part of the conversation? Maybe you don't have to leave.
You asked my question, so I...
Okay. Did you have anything to add before we get into multiple?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
And just my last comment is, the reason that I wanted to bring this today, and I'm glad that I got to work with Supervisor Green on this, is again, I'm looking at this from somebody involved in the business. I would want to know what are the expectations so I can set up my business to be successful this year? And with things having already sunsetted for this year in 2023, I felt this was the opportune time to have the conversation and potentially continue what we had started.
Okay.
Actually, you know what? There was one more, and it might be a B, so let me know. So I know that we delayed last year. Pat, do you have any idea, just prior to that, how many permits are in default from that timeframe, or is it still kind of like too much information to go through?
So that number is still in flux, partially because of the changes to the equity program. We didn't take action on a lot of different cultivators, because so many could qualify for that grant. There were approximately 41 cultivators who had some sort of delinquency at the end of last year. A lot of those are being covered through the equity grant, but a lot of them are also being disputed in some other way, whether there's a concern about the tax bill or an issue with the permitting. So we don't have that resolved yet. I don't think we'll have clarity on that probably for several more months after the equity programs expanded and we resolve all of those existing claims. But I would expect that number to continue to drop as we work through them.
Thanks, Pat.
Well, I'm in support of these changes being temporary. I think we can talk about the canopy at some point, well, maybe in item B. But, you know, we were in dire straits last winter. Our industry was in dire straits, and as we've heard from them, this has offered some stability. We're still in a time of flex, and, you know, I'm in favor of it for today.
Are we done with public comments?
We are.
Madam Chair, I'll for the resolution.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Nay.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, item B. Supervisor Sabatier, Supervisor Green. Oh, I will read it. Did I already read it? I think I already read it.
Yeah, I think you read it when I was...
Okay, yeah. Okay, go ahead for section B.
So basically, again, wanting to continue the conversation we originally started when we created these original resolutions in 2022, where there was conversation about if we change so much, should we bring it back to the voters? And it takes time to make those things happen. Our staff is at max capacity in many departments, and so wanted to have that discussion on, do we continue to extend these things and review them on a time-to-time basis when it needs to be reviewed? Or do we put it back to the voters and discuss what that timeline would look like at a later meeting? But I just wanted to at least continue the conversation that had began last time, where our previous county council had said that maybe we've changed enough that it does need to go back to the voters, and there seemed to be some interest from the board to maybe doing that. So I just didn't want to ignore that part of the conversation.
Well, the changes that we have made, I thought they were within what the voters approved?
No, they are within, yes.
Because we've reduced it. But if we're changing the way that the taxes occur, then that would have to go to the voters. Okay, Supervisor Green?
And to that point, I don't think that's a done deal. I think we would turn to county council if there was direction to move in that. council if there was direction to move in that. Because if you recall, Measure C had some amendability built into it. As long as it doesn't increase the amount of tax, that would have to go back to the voters. But for reducing the tax, it's a floater. Basically, it was designed to be a floater. We can adjust the tax rate up and down, which is good news. Again, if we are able to scale our industry and get more permits out there, maybe we can lower the tax rate and still, still keep the county solvent. But to, but to the things I'm most likely, most interested in discussing as far as making permanent, the canopy calculation is what I'm interested in. I'm not interested at this point in beyond the resolution we just approved extending tax relief beyond that, because just like our cannabis growers need some certainty in what's moving ahead, our county, as a tax recipient from this program, we need some certainty too. And we have needs. And I can't guarantee where we're going to be in two years, but I think, you know, having extended two, three, four years now of tax relief on top of the equity program that allows for some tax payments that way, I'm hoping we'll have enough certainty that we don't need to come back and discuss additional tax relief. But the canopy calculation is so common sense, should not require an amendment by the voters. And, you know, we should be moving forward and making that change permanent, whether it's by resolution, whether it's by policy of the treasurer tax collector, whatever it takes. But I don't think it's an unreasonable change. I think it's a common sense change. It will align us with state law. It will align us with the actual cultivation practices of our licensed farmers. And so I think moving, giving direction today to, to staff to find a way to make that permanent would be appropriate.
Did you want to add anything?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I would just add a few points. Yeah, I think canopy is definitely something that, that should be looked at for those reasons I previously stated. There are some other issues if, if this was to go back to the voters. There's additional changes that we need to make, even if this, if this wasn't going back to the voters. There's enforcement aspects to the ordinance that need to be reviewed. There's different mechanisms we need to put in place to move forward with some of the actions my office needs to take. So I think one of my concerns is that if, if this were to go back on the ballot and results in some sort of more substantial restructuring, that's just an added layer of complexity for my office. The ordinance was written, I think Supervisor Green pointed out, with the potential changes in state law in mind. And so it did contemplate that there would be changes and that the ordinance might conform to those. So I don't, from my perspective, I don't see that it's necessary to go back on the ballot. I did want to speak to gross receipts a little bit, just because I know that has come up. And I just wanted to highlight for your board that that would be a very large administrative undertaking for my office. There's a lot of costs involved. There's staff capacity, which we would need to expand. There's other things that we might need. I know Supervisor Green has brought up software that exists through CCA. When I looked at it before, the cost was too high. But some of the reason we've been able to dodge those costs is by using the square footage model, we're able to utilize a lot of the work that community development is already doing for permitting, and we're able to sort of ride on their coattails. If we were to switch out the model we're in, Treasurer Tax Collector's office needs to take a lot of that over, a lot of the investigation and auditing that would become necessary. So I think the current program is sustainable. I think there's changes that need to be made. If there's some more stability of the program as it goes on, that will help us. I know each year, it's always been in flux, the, the changes that are rolling before your board. But I think there's potential to make this work. And in light of our capacity, it's probably the most viable type of tax system out there. I would also just highlight that if we were to switch out this program, as I said, I think we would probably need additional staff and software support as we need to expand auditing. It could also impact other county departments. For instance, once we were to switch to self-reporting or gross receipts rather than the model we're in, we would definitely have to work with the DA's office for criminal referrals when there's fraud and other issues that arise with self-reported returns, which we generally just haven't had to deal with here. The model we operate under has, you know, negated the need for a lot of that enforcement. So that's just something I wanted to get out there as your board considers the different options, is that the, the current program, I think, is something that our office can ultimately make work with the resources we have. If we go a different route, probably a lot of that revenue would need to be made available so that we could expand and do what we needed to do.
Anybody from the board? Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I would agree with Supervisors Sabatier and Michael Green about the, the canopy, making that a permanent change. Definitely in favor of that at this point, to come back to the board or however we need to do that with help of county council and admin or treasurer tax collector. So anyway, that's, that's where I stand at this point. Voted already to extend the tax relief earlier on the resolution. So that's where I'm at at this point.
So I agree with that. But what else did you say about enforcement that would be helpful, a change that you would like to see if we did go through the motions of changing it for the canopy?
I think with canopy, what we would benefit from is that the state utilizes the canopy measure.
Right. But you said there was something, another change that would be beneficial too.
Let's see. Oh, for enforcement, we need to add the ability to more clearly define the place liens. There's other enforcement mechanisms that different counties have. And I think if you're looking at it, most of those ordinances are more like TOT ordinances or unsecured tax what we have. Ours didn't fully define the enforcement ability. So it was left open to be collected in the same manner as other county taxes. But there's additional language we would need to add to effectively move forward with that.
And then the penalties for the due dates too, that's been problematic this year too. So that's something else we could look at?
I think that would be beneficial if your board considered the penalties to the tax ordinance. It's, it's frustrating right now that unlike some other taxes, the penalty doesn't change. You're hit with this large penalty upfront, even if you're just one day late. But then there's no additional monthly penalty. Most tax ordinances have a smaller upfront penalty, and then sort of like an interest rate that accrues each month, or additional penalty if time goes by without paying. I think that's led to sort of unintended consequences here, because once you're late by a day, it, there's no real reason to, you know, pay right away. You're basically, the only incentive to pay is before we go to take enforcement action, before we notify CDD to pull your permit, or we are going to place a lien or take, take some other measure. So if there is a way to potentially split that penalty out, I know there's limitations in what you can do within the framework of the ordinance. But some way that there was a lesser penalty upfront that grew over time, I think that would be beneficial for our collection efforts.
And those three things we could change, but we could also keep, as we've just done, keep the, the due dates flexible and the, and the tax rate flexible as we try and figure this out, weather it for the next couple of years?
My understanding is yes, although some of that would go to county council, because there is some limitations within the, the total maximum allowable penalty under our ordinance right now.
And just briefly, under section 18-55, it is a penalty for non-payment at a sum equal to 25% of the total amount due. The, as Supervisor Green mentioned, under the subsequent to vote, under the issue of putting it out for the voters versus just a resolution within the confines of the ordinance, it is based on whether or not the, the proposed amendment to the cannabis cultivation tax ordinance would result in an increase in the amount of the tax or broaden the scope of the tax imposed herein. So certainly, our office will, will work with Treasurer Tax Collector's office, community development, administration, in determining whether, in trying to hash out those details as it relates to, to that issue, whether it would fall within those confines or what's, based on what's being proposed here as part of the board's.
We could start with the lower fine and ramp up too. Wouldn't that work?
That is possible to, yes.
I don't know who was first. Supervisor Sabatier.
Go with Supervisor Green.
Oh, Supervisor Green.
Just, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for bringing that forward. It kind of jogged my memory. Our Measure C said what it said, but City of Fresno, Measure A in 2018, had much more robust language like you're talking about. It was a graduated level of enforcement, and it didn't really stand out at the time. That was being debated. But now that you mention it, that would be a good model. I'm sure there's other good model ordinances out there that, that you could use. So I'm supportive of that. So permanent canopy and then tweaking the enforcement provisions would be appropriate direction.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I remembered. Yes, to the canopy being looked at as a permanent. Obviously, we have till the end of 2024 with the resolution that we just approved to make those changes happen. So there's time. And I don't know if Director Turner would like to speak to this, but I'm guessing that within the revision of the cannabis ordinance that she's currently going through, that there'd be the possibility of what's the enforcement if taxes are not paid or, or things like that.
Sure. Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development. I appreciate Supervisor Green's memory of how we first established the cultivation area. It was easy because it was a static area. However, in that time, since we have been doing our annual compliance monitoring, we're able to, to measure canopy without any difficulty. Sometimes the ground's a little bumpy, and we had the wheel thing, you know, that made the distance. But this year, we're getting lasers. So it's really no problem for us to measure the canopy, even if it changes every year. Enforcement, it's, it may be helpful for the board to note that should the permutee not pay their taxes, they're in violation then of their conditions of approval. And so Article 60 in our zoning ordinance does provide for revocation for projects such as that. So that is also a pretty big stick that this body carries.
Yeah. But I think it's the time period between installments when we're not receiving the payments is, that's what I'm concerned about. And that's what's creating a hardship.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, then I'll take that stick back, because that's mostly for just total defaults. Yeah. I'll save that one for later. But anyway, the, the board does have some, some leeway and definitely some leverage to make sure that those taxes are still getting paid.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have something now? Or do you want to?
Yeah, I didn't know. You had your pen up.
I was playing with it.
So I just want to make sure I heard something clear. Pat, you stated that your department would have, it would be a heavy burden if there was an election to take place. Is that what, I don't know if I heard that correctly.
Well, I'm imagining there's generally only two viable models out there right now that counties are using, which is the square footage tax or gross receipts tax. So from my perspective, I would think if it was going on the ballot, the reason to do that would probably be a conversion to gross receipts. I would think if you're staying within the square footage model, you probably wouldn't have the need to go to the voters. So that's, that's my concern, is that if it, if it goes to the voters, the likely outcome would seem to be the conversion to a gross receipts model. I have spoken with other counties, and I've just become aware a lot of the, the resources that are necessary to maintain that model. And that's what concerns me, because we have difficulty filling our positions. And we have, there's just so many other things we need to do. That would represent a large new workload. So that's, it may be too, I don't know what your board ultimately decides. It could be that you need to put it back on the ballot because you want to make more sweeping changes to the current model. I just imagine it would likely be for gross receipts, and that's what concerns me.
And then, just, just for clarification, the public conduct their own initiative if they decide, right? I mean, I just want to make sure.
Always.
Right? And it would be a simple majority as opposed to a super majority, right? Just, I'm just noting that because I've been contacted about it. So just want to make sure I stated. All right. Thanks.
Okay. We'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on this item?
Good morning again. Jennifer Smith, Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Really appreciate the discussion and the forward thinking on this. Obviously, we would be very much in favor of changing to a permanent canopy calculation. It aligns with the state, which is the whole process of the current cannabis tax force is aligning with the state as much as, as possible. I understand the, the desire of some people to go towards a gross receipts tax, but I also understand the calculation nightmare that it can become. I think that we're seeing, like, if we can get to the right balance of canopy tax rate, that it all kind of evens out and keeps the tax burden on the cultivator at a level playing field and less of a burden of calculation. So I'd be in favor with, we'd be in favor with those two options. And nobody really wants to go back to a ballot. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone in Zoom?
Phone 6205.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I think I just heard Maria Turner say that they could revoke permits for non-compliance, but they don't. And I've heard this talked about in the cannabis past forth, if I understood it correctly, they could sign, but they haven't. And also, I hear Mr. Sullivan say he could give you more information that he doesn't yet have, but he needs more staff to do it. And both of those things go directly towards what I think is really needed, which is the correct county infrastructure to staff this program, so that it is grown responsibly, sustainably, healthfully, for all of Lake County, not just the private sector. What break, for instance, did walnut growers get? What break did, I mean, did fire survivors get? We didn't. We didn't get any break. So why is this one group getting so much staff attention, so many staff hours, and so much special privilege? Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else in the Zoom room?
Erin McCarrick.
Erin, if you want to state your name, you've got three minutes.
Oh.
All right. We can hear you. Stop.
Yep, absolutely talking without unmuting. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you for bringing this up. And to, to the point before, to Jen's point, to some of the points that the Supervisors made, I think one of the biggest things is consistency. And so knowing what the tax rate will be, knowing when the tax bill will come, and having the staff that is going to be able to get, you know, the, the taxes out at the consistent time and known entity. It's, it's building an entire industry. I mean, just as we saw, you know, the tech industry didn't exist until, you know, mid to late 90s. And we're still dealing with laws about privacy and about how do we live in this world. And so cannabis, legal cannabis didn't exist before this. And so now we are beyond medical. So now we are figuring out how to create this. And I thank very much Tax Collector Sullivan for all of his work in establishing what didn't exist before and all the work that has been done by the Supervisors, planning commission, Maria, everybody. So thank you so much for doing that. And I also agree with not taking it to the voters and just kind of helping the county figure out how we can all work together to figure out how to create this industry. Thank you again for bringing this up.
Thank you. Anyone else in Zoom? Okay. We'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just last comment. State law requires that every cannabis project, whether it be 10,000 square feet or many, many acres, to go through the SEQA process. Normal standard agriculture does not always have to go through that process, depending on if they need a grading permit or depending on the kind of public comments they receive. Some do go all the way through to the EIR. And there's zero taxes that I'm aware of that we are collecting on any of our agricultural products being grown, unless, of course, it's processed to the point that it's taxed when you purchase it with a sales tax. So that's the reason there's not the level of staff time being spent on other things that are being grown in the ground. And that's the reason that we're not talking about their taxes, because we can't reduce zero. So just wanted to make that point, that state law prohibits us from talking about certain things.
There are other subsidies available for agriculture.
And there are.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm putting pen to paper. Just, I'm slogging a motion together here. And I think whatever, I'm just restating what I think I've heard. There's consensus to do.
Well, wait, we haven't heard from two Supervisors yet. So I don't, and this is, this section is just. is just direction.
Right.
So let's hear from you. And I haven't given my opinion either.
Now, with this direction, I feel that, bring it to the voters on our behalf, I don't want to put your department in a burdened situation and whatnot. So I think that if the, if there's people that are desiring to do so, they can do it as a public, and they'll also have a lower threshold to abide by when it comes to, or to obtain if that comes to fruition. So that's where I'm at with it.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, and I think I stated my stance earlier, you know, obviously, making the permanent change to canopy, anything that we can do here at the board level, would just appreciate County Council working with everybody to bring that back to the board before we make changes. I think what we've done now gives us an opportunity for this industry to establish itself over the next couple of years, and we'll really see where we are. And we've got a lot of work to do. We've got the Cannabis Task Force and other things, and we've got to look at not only just the taxing conversation, but what the industry looks like here. Is it, you know, lounge opportunities for some of the, you know, our storefronts, those types of things? You know, I really think that we need to look at all this in really helping establish the industry, and I think some of the steps we've made today will allow it to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I agree that we could, we should look at making the canopy element of this permanent. I would like to see another look at the penalty rate and the liens for enforcement are the two items that our Tax Collector brought up that I think might be helpful. And I would be in favor of bringing those three items back after budget sometime in the summer to look at permanent changes. And I'm just wondering if we have consensus for that.
Right, I agree with that, and that's also one of the reasons why, I mean, I don't want to go too far back or too far off, but why I was against the initial ordinance is I would like more time, like an extra month, like you mentioned, for the data. But that's the only reason why I opposed the last resolution. But with this, I agree with you, with your recommendations.
I don't have an appetite to bring this to the voters. I think we've come a long way with this, and I think we've got time to continue to perfect it and adjust to the industry as it grows. And we're heavily invested in what's already been created, and I don't think changing to a new, a new way of doing things is going to be helpful. I think that will set us back. So we, is what?
Just to clarify the third point, I had two down. What was the third point?
Well, the three points are the placing liens for enforcement and looking at the late penalty rate, and then canopy. So those are the three things that we have consensus on?
Yep.
Okay, so that's your direction.
Well, I can just clarify that just a little bit. So two of those, I think, fell on the Treasury Tax Collector's lap, and that would be basically to look at graduated enforcement language, and the liens would be part of that. And then for the.
Your microphone's not on.
I'm sorry. So part of it, two of those would go to Treasury Tax Collector, it sounds like, for follow-up, and the other one, the permanent canopy calculation. If we were just to add some clarification to the request, it would be to direct Director Turner to propose somehow adopting a permanent canopy definition in the revised ordinance that is now being reviewed by the Cannabis Task Force. So would the direction include pitching the permanent canopy definition to Cannabis Task Force?
I think we're just giving it to staff, and I think the appropriate.
Coming back in the summer, right?
Yeah, and coming back in the summer, and I think it will probably be collaborative work that will happen, and I don't think we have to figure out exactly who does what. I think they can, they can handle it. Yep, all right.
Just wanted to say briefly that this program in general really supports something in my district that I'm really grateful for. So the Roadmap Task Force has been a very successful initiative in Clear Lake Oaks. So I just wanted to note that as well.
Right, thank you. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your input and for coming here today and participating and always helping us make this process better for all of Lake County.